Start with our invocation now, even though Jacob's not here yet. I'm sure he'll be shortly. Deanna Shaw has graciously agreed to bring the invocation. She's with the Shaysburg Community Bible Church. Thank you, Deanna, for being here.
Thank you, Sue. May we bow our heads? Father, we thank you for this evening. And we bring honor to the mayor and all the council members, too, that are here for the best of the community and pass ordinances for the best of the community. Father, and I ask a special blessing and protection for our police department, our ladies upstairs, also our city workers. And Father, I pray for this nation. Now, tonight, this nation is so divided. Father, I ask for healing this nation. And bless this evening, tonight, in Jesus' name.
Thank you, Deanna.
You're welcome, Sue.
I just texted him, too. I should have asked. Well, I think we'll go ahead and start. We do have a forum, so we're good there. I will call the meeting to order and ask everyone to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Shirley, would you take world call, please?
Mary Ann.
Here.
Larry.
Lambert.
Here.
Mike Powell. Chad Ford.
Here.
Buckford.
Here.
Misty Lytle. Here. Jacob Buffer. Mike Powell. And Jacob Buffer.
Mike had let me know yesterday, but I hadn't heard that from Jacob. Looking for approval of our agenda for tonight?
I move that the agenda be adopted as per your...
Second.
We have a motion from Chad, seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Sure, if you have an explanation, I might want to ask my...
Agenda?
Yeah. I know I had it, I just...
There's little checkmarks on it, but...
From the house to here, it disappeared.
Looking now for reading and approval of the minutes of our meeting of June 20th.
Sorry.
We suspend the rules, waive the reading, approve the minutes from the June 20th, 2024 regular reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Do we have any pre-approved reports or presentations? I'm not aware of any. Anybody else? Moving on, then to public comment. Is there anybody here who wants to make public comment at this time? No?
None.
Okay. We do limit that to three minutes, just to let you know. And I would invite you to introduce yourself because you're on camera. Please, we'll tell you.
I guess meeting hours, last meeting before was brought up. I just want to clarify. The council was in agreement with no prayer, unless you're a clergy, that was our understanding, and citizen can answer invocation?
Well, there was some issue with having people come when they were supposed to come and then the last minute not having people here. So yes, we did vote on that and said that if the guest pastor who has been invited to bring the invocation is not in attendance, then we will not have an invocation.
Okay.
For the guest to answer your question, yes, council was in favor.
Thank you so much. Here, while...
Welcome, Jacob.
I don't like it.
Jacob's here. Yay, thank you. Shirley, do we have any communications?
Communications would be the flyer I handed out for National Light Out, which is Tuesday, August 6th. Day is Election Day. 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. up here in the park, Ventura's Memorial Park. And kind of same thing as always. Activities, food, and drinks. Will the building be done yet? It won't be done, but... Can I just keep going?
You may.
Okay. So they poured the concrete today underneath the pavilion, underneath the roof. Next week, they're going to pour the apron and the bathrooms in the workroom or whatever you want to call it, the storage room. So that is progressing nicely. We ordered the roof, the metal for the roof. And I don't know if they'll be out here next week. They come with a trailer, roll it out, cut it as the size as they need it, and then pile it in a pile. So I don't really quite know that whole thing. So how that's going to work as well. Or it's good to see it, though. Yeah. And then I just have a few other things. So Misty, you're the August Perry Pride. So you can, if you...
Do I have an assigned date later?
You do. I'll show you afterwards.
Okay.
Okay. And then I will put down...
She can have that.
Thank you.
That's a copy that I have another one now.
There you go.
Here, okay.
I don't have an agenda, but I have a map.
And then we will do July and August, the second meeting of August for winners.
Do I just pick one person or two?
We can all...
Oh, okay.
Let's see. The election is August 6th. Primary closes open at 7:00, closes at 8:00. I have mailed all of the absentee applications out. So those have been mailed all last week. I will be in the office Saturday, August 3rd, at 9:00, 9:00 to 1:00 in August, Sunday, August 4th, 10:00 to 4:00 to answer any questions and help people register or do whatever, anything that they need, I guess, with the election. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Shirley, anybody? Mayor report. I have three things I just want to tell you about. The first one is that we've not had any new inquiries in the last month regarding the lot that we're trying to sell south of town. So we have the bigger sign on there, but hasn't generated any phone calls. We could list it with a Realtor, but the Realtor that I spoke to about an auction, he didn't know that that really was going to get it done for us either based on the information. And I don't really know that listing it with an agent is going to get it done either. It's just, it's not a build a lot. It's not something people can really do. The best value is going to be to a neighbor who adjoins the parcel, in my experience, in 22 years as a Realtor. And the business owner to the south, who had expressed interest before and literally had a handshake agreement to buy it, for whatever reason, changed his mind. And he's been notified that that agreement's at an end and that he can't park his stuff on there anymore. So I don't know if you want to just let it be there? Do you want to pursue an auction? Do you want to... What do you want to do?
We have one seventy-four, yeah, seven something?
Yep, seven thousand.
Didn't we have one offer? It was like a couple grand or something like that? Was it pretty small?
That was the neighbor to the south. And it was four thousand. No, we haven't had any other offers at all.
Now he doesn't want it at all, even for the four?
Evidently not. He would not return my 23 phone calls over the last seven months. So, yeah.
I don't think it's hurting us, I mean, we...
No, it's not.
I would say we stay the course at least through the summertime and maybe this fall, if things settle down for people in the area, maybe we can take another look at it then.
I did have one thought. I could make up a flyer. Shirley and Megan could help me make up a flyer and mail that to the Realtors who do business in this area and just let them know. Not offering to Pam anything, but if they find a buyer, their buyer can pay their fee, their own buyer's fee. So would you be in agreement with me doing that?
That would be fine.
Okay. All right?
Yeah, I agree.
I will do that.
Can't hurt.
The second thing is really good news, and most of you know this, but some people in the audience, perhaps on video, are not aware that the state of Michigan passed their budget about 10 days ago. And included in that budget was legislative money to the total of $3.2 million for disaster relief for a few cities in Michigan that experienced tornado or flood disasters. And the point two is for the city of Perry. So the city of Perry will be receiving $200,000 from the state of Michigan for disaster relief to help with our tornado expenses. So thank you very much. And thank you to the legislators that were involved in that decision. And especially to Senator Sam Singh, who kind of spearheaded our name into the mix of things and called me at 5:30 that day to tell me the good news. So that was nice. And then I want to say thank you to the Parks Committee, Chad and Jacob, Megan, who's not here, Bob, for a wonderful family fun night last night. I heard so many positive things. And I was here myself and saw people enjoying themselves. There were probably 700 people here. It was a very enjoyable evening. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
And that's all I have to report. Do we have any committee reports for tonight?
I'll just let everybody know that we're going to go ahead and schedule an ordinance committee meeting for Thursday, August 8th, here in council chambers at 10:00 a.m. Looks like most of the committee members will be available that day. And then we do have one ordinance proposal from the ordinance committee that we'll have on the agenda here in a few minutes.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Larry. Any other committees? Okay.
I think you got enough for today.
Yeah.
Okay.
So last night, summer fun night, that was a great hit. It was really big. I think it was the first time that we did it. It was a really good hit. I'm really happy how it turned out. And I'm really, I want to thank all the sponsors and everybody that was there last night. It's really great to have that. And then the two food trucks that were also there. Another thing that I do have to report is we did get the play equipment. It was delivered...
Yesterday.
Yesterday. So there you're going to start, hopefully soon, building the play equipment that was ordered up here next to the facility, to the pavilion. So that's all I really got. I don't think, unless Jake, you got anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay. Meanwhile, we have the equipment till we're done with the pavilion. Just in case.
So is the National Light Out then going to be more...
Just in case what's...
Accidents happen very easily.
Oh, it's across the driveway.
It's across the driveway. No, no, no. No, it's across the driveway. Sorry.
I thought it was over here.
I should've...
Oh, I don't know where it's at.
Near it, but not...
Okay. Then you're less likely, but I can imagine.
Yeah, it'll be the south side of them.
You've been around construction sites, and you're always like, how'd they get that?
Yeah, sorry. I should have made that more clear, that it's not. It's on the opposite side.
Okay.
Yes.
We did, last year we had about 300 people. This year we had about 700. I said to Megan today, as we were talking about the event, we better gear up for more people next year.
I heard people from Bancroft, from Wausau, Durin'. I mean, people were kind of coming in, nice people coming into the community, so...
The people in the food truck, we were just chatting. And they said, this is great. We've been to a lot of places, but we've never seen any community do this. Just things that are fun. They're not trying to sell you anything. They're not trying to, you know, get you to agree to something. It's just a fun time. And they were very impressed. And they're from Wausau.
Everything was a big hit. But once again, the phone can probably be number one hit, yeah.
Sure was. Well, thank you, Chad. Thank you, Jacob. Moving on then to presentation and approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and the payment we offer us. Second.
We have a motion from Chad, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We don't have any old business on the agenda, so we'll move into the new business, possible approval of SADA funding. They have sent us a request, as they do every year. And this is not an approval for payment, but simply a request for a commitment. And that, again, this happens every year. But I will read the highlights of this for the benefit of those that don't have a copy. Letter dated June 12th. The SADA Board of Directors has approved the SADA budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2024, which is fiscal year 2025. The formula for determining the share for each of the participating municipalities was followed. And they did include that formula for us to be able to see with a magnifying glass. The SADA Board has adopted a budget which is as lean as possible, but still enables us to serve the citizens of the 12 participating municipalities. The commitment requested from you reflects rising expenses due to inflation and a return to pre-COVID federal reimbursement rates. As has been our previous practice, the following requested amount will not increase, but could decrease. And I'll just say here that every year, the amount they've requested has been less when it has finally been computed. The action regarding the actual amount will happen in May of 2025. The city of Perry's share of the total funding request for the fiscal year October 1, 2024 through September 30th, 2025 is not to exceed $9,081.14. The data used to determine the requested amount is shown in the attached funding model. We're asking that each participating municipality forward to us their commitment regarding this request, the $9,081.14, no later than August 26, 2024. If approved by your council, I would anticipate that you would receive a billing on or about June 2nd, 2025, with a requested payment by August 11th, 2025. We wish to thank you and your council for your past support and ask for your continued support, as stated above. So again, this is not an approval for payment. It is a commitment letter telling them that based on this information, we, the council, approve a commitment up to that amount.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we filed this, I think, six weeks ago, eight weeks ago. Most of the data provided was the trips were used for metaphor reasons, I want to say?
Most of them, yeah.
There was a couple, you know. So I think for that reason, I definitely supported.
I know we have students that use it, too. So there's students that will come, because it's a school of choice in Perry. We have students that bus in on SADA from like Wausau and Grand and other places. So I know that there's several communities that don't pay for the SADA, and so those students can't get on SADA for that. So I mean, it would be great if all of our communities in Chad-Wausau County could do SADA because it's helpful for everybody to get around our county a little bit better.
There are, I think I said in this letter, there are 12 participating municipalities. I don't know which ones are not participating.
Well, that's like when I was reading it, it looks like they list two, three, four, five that says member municipalities. And then it has a whole bunch of them down below that's non-member. So it was kind of hard to see which 12 actually are paying.
Any further discussion regarding SADA's request for a commitment? Looking then for a motion supporting that commitment?
I'm sorry, is there any public comment on these?
Did you have a question?
I have comments to make about this program.
And your name is?
My name's Christopher Method. I live down at the Bureau.
Christopher Method, M-E-T-H-O-D?
Yep.
I think we could enlist your comments. Go ahead.
So this SADA program is not as good as people think. We tried to utilize it for my daughter last year, who participated in college classes from Perry through Baker College, which were in the morning. And we tried to arrange transportation through SADA months in advance, several months in advance. And they continued to give us a runaround to where we never got transportation all year. Between my wife and I, we lost several hours of work every week, not to mention transportation costs and other expenses that we incurred and lost money due to the fact that SADA could not provide what they promised to provide. And every time they promised to provide it, that time would come, they would say no and push us back another month, until we finally gave up.
Did they give you a reason? I mean, I mean, does that...
Lack of drivers, lack of routes, lack of... They gave all kinds of reasons.
Okay.
So if we're going to continue to fund them, they need to deliver on what they're going to promise. They failed us last year. And we have no use for them next year, so I really don't care. But they failed us last year, and I recommend that we not continue. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Are you aware that it is on the ballot to renew? I mean, this is part of the contract. It's a four-year contract.
Oh, yes. I trust, I'm aware. I sit the, as the council's sitting here discussing it and looking to continue doing it, I want to make sure that I had that comment.
This is part of the contract that we've already signed.
Okay.
Well, it's been more than that.
It's a four-year contract. That has already been agreed to. What's on the ballot will be a new four-year contract. And that would be...
So August...
But it's a contract that we signed with SADA for a village, yes.
They failed us and cost us a lot of time, effort, and money.
Well, and I hear what you're saying. But just to clarify, it costs you time and money to take your daughter to class. SADA did not...
They made a commitment to provide transportation and then did not.
Well, if they don't have anybody to drive. I mean, and I'm not supporting the fact that they couldn't do it. But just like so many businesses, it's hard to find people to take their jobs.
Except that they made a commitment that they could do it. And then when it's time coming, they said no.
I hear you. Yep. Well, it's on the ballot, so talk to your friends. Any further discussion regarding that? What's your pleasure?
I move that we commit to SADA financial support for their October 2024 to September 30, 2025 budget year in the amount not to exceed $9,081.14. We authorize the mayor to send a letter to SADA confirming such commitment.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Jacob. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Moving on to possible approval of the zoning amendment that was read at the June 20th meeting. It is 394.
Just as a reminder for everyone, this one dealt with the yard waste activity in terms of bagging and potential disposal if folks wanted to be able to bring their yard waste to the DPW. That we've made some modifications, reviewed it here, made some changes, and did read it, I guess I, as Sue said at our last meeting. Any open questions?
I had a question for Kevin, but I'm not afraid with the ordinance. I just was going to ask him if he could move the day from Tuesday to Monday because people do their work, yard work on the weekends, and leave it all instead of having it put in the garage, leave it all. Because I know one of the complaints was it gets wet and that kind of stuff, so...
Would you like me to ask him that?
Please. Just basically, a lot of people work, you know, five, six days a week, so they do their work on Monday, Saturday, Sunday.
Yeah, but it doesn't say specifically what day, how...
No, it doesn't...
No, but no, that's why...
It's weather permitting, too.
Correct. It's just a policy or whatever.
Yeah, it's just the day they choose to do it.
EPW operating practice would really...
There you go. Thank you for, I didn't know how to word that, so...
We really just didn't get that specific in the ordinance.
No, ordinance, me, it's fine. I just was going to ask Kevin, could we look into doing that on his side?
That's what you said, right? From date and Monday from Tuesday?
Yeah, so it's supposed to Tuesday now. And then, you know, I find it hard to remember. If I put it in the grass, because it may rain, I don't put it out.
You want your dress clippings and leaves and stuff?
Yeah, the bang, whatever's in the bang, yeah.
I will pass that along.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I move that we approve ordinance amendment 394-1080.02, separation bottling and packaging, which was read during the June 20th, 2024 regular council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next, we have possible first reading of zoning ordinance amendment 397, Chapter 3, Section 3.14, accessory building structures and uses.
Did we do this last year or earlier this? Well, we made some modifications to this previously. But then what happened is at one of our ordinance committee meetings, the question of carports came up. And we did not have carports well-defined in our zoning ordinance. Just for background, actually Ron Korzek, your ordinance enforcement officer, raised some questions about it. So what this is trying to do is a suggestive approach for what the city would like to do around carports. In the zoning ordinance, as it stands right now, there's only two points that carports are even mentioned. One is in the definition where a carport is. And then secondly, inside of what structure is, carports are highlighted as one of the structures. But no place do we have anything, whether you can have them, what you should do with them.
Well, is it, and that's good. I like the clarification of, yes, you can have a carport.[1645.92] I like the clarification of, yes, you can have a carport. Is there a problem with people storing things? What are we trying to limit? Because this says all other storage of cars need an approved accessory building. I don't know what we're trying to accomplish with that wording. Because you kind of point out that it's vague, but there, you know, your lawnmower, your grill, and bicycles and stuff. So what else are people putting in? It's a median issue.
Not a lot. We've got a few cases around the city where we've got people that got abandoned, lawnmowers that haven't run. It doesn't appear that they've run for... Basically, it's a storage junk. In some cases, or gives that appearance. But what we're trying to do with the ordinance committee is clarify that a carport is primarily for storing a car. But we said, okay, during the summer months in particular, let's suggest that if you've got kids with a bicycle, whether you don't have space in the garage or don't have a garage, you can put in a carport to keep them out of the weather. If you've got an outdoor grill for the summer months and you're going to be grilling a lot, those things that are used with some regularity, but not intended to be, you know, a closed building shed, storage facility, because there are no sides, they're open.
Right, everyone can see them.
Yeah.
And I hate adding words to everything, but sometimes when you leave things to interpretation, it depends on the person who's interpreting it. Well, that's something that may be junk to you or look junky to you, but it may not be, it'd be fine to pursue or meet or whatever. That's, that's all, it's, it's just... It's a gray area, you know what I'm saying?
To make, but it's really for those things that are going to be yard-type things, that are going to have some routine usage, that we said that we would be okay with those sheltered under a carport. But, you know, year-round storage that may get, may or may not get used for months or years on end, no, you need to have an enclosed accessory building slash shed to, to house those.
So if I have a wheelbarrow, I want to put it in my carport, I can't. That might get used maybe once a year.
Well, it says et cetera.
I know, but that, I'm not trying to be...
Yes, you are.
I'm just trying to point out, it is very, because words mean something.
That's right.
And people can interpret them different ways, right?
If you use your wheelbarrow in the winter to haul snow...
I have, I have, but usually I'll...
And you don't want to push it back. It just makes sense that some things you would have in your carport because you'd be more likely to use it in the summer, the spring, fall, but then once winter arrives, you throw it in there.
Because Larry mentioned that if you don't use it for months on end, you know, a wheelbarrow that had to use a long, long time, but it still, it still works.
I don't think the carport was in the ordinance at all, correct?
It was the, there was a definition of what a carport is, but no place that defined what the uses of a carport are. So what we're trying to get at is, you know, the first, quite honestly, the first draft that I took to the ordinance committee was, it's a carport for a licensed, you know, licensed vehicle.
Yeah, our vehicle will have to be licensed, so yeah.
Let's try to open it up a little bit to, you know, be slightly more inclusive. We're just trying to get away from, it's not an open-air storage facility for long-term storage.
That may be a way, a better way to say it, something like along those lines and then. Because again, it's going to be inter... Well, it only says you can have your, you know, your grill and your lawnmower in there. I, it's, I hate to beat the dead horse, but we could get somebody who is very stringent and say, because we're not all going to have a council forever, and say, well, that's what it says, and no, you can't have that. That's all. I just, it's, I don't want us to be too confrontational, I said that right, with our, with our residents. That's all. I like the definition of a carport that we're doing that. I think that's great. I just think we need to be a little bit more open on what they can put under it, that's all. Or be, we either be, I don't know. I really don't want that to not be hurting.
How much do I get to find routinely, Bob?
I don't know.
On a limited basis for routinely used, my interpretation routinely is far more frequent than once a year.
Correct. Like every week to haul your baits in your wheelbarrow out to the curb. I, you know, that's a routinely used thing.
Yeah, but if, if I have no other place to store my wheelbarrow, may use that...
You need to put it on Craigslist.
But why? Why am I being, why would I be pointing a single out because I have a wheelbarrow that I only use every two years? Or whatever the issue, you know? So that's all. It's, you can get that particular if you let it.
Yeah.
That's all. I just, that's the kinds of things I worry about that we're, you know?
Mostly the things I think we're trying to address here are people that put a lot of stuff that should be in the house or in the basement or in the attic out in their carport.
Or in a shed or in a, you know, storage shed.
Or in a...
Something enclosed.
There is an issue that you have seen.
Yes.
Right on the second story.
Well, no, I'm not, yeah, that's a different...
No, it's not a different story. It is the story, and that's the one that sets precedent.
So we have to address that one incident.
It has to be in a forcible ordinance, and that's what this is trying to achieve. Is carport wasn't defined. It could have been loosely defined as garage up until we added the definition, if I'm understanding...
In aggression, yeah.
Okay.
So then, then you have to define it. Then you have to clarify what it wouldn't be acceptable. And that's what this definition, I think, does as best we can, because like you said, we don't know what...
And I'm, honestly, I'm not trying to be difficult.
It's not the only... Yeah, it's not the only one in the city.
Right, no, they're not the only one, but it has opened our eyes, the ordinance committee and council's eyes, as to what we need to address in order to set precedent. I mean, the court has ruled now on, on one, and it has helped us have knowledge of how we should address the issue.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? I move that zoning ordinance amendment 397, Chapter 3, Section 3.14, accessory building structures and uses, which reads as follows, would place on the next agenda for adoption. The City of Perry ordains, the City of Perry zoning ordinance, Chapter 3, Section 3.14, accessory building structures and uses is hereby amended with the following. Chapter 3, Section 3.14, accessory building structures and uses. General requirements. A, accessory building structures and uses are permitted only in connection with incidental to and on the same lot with a principal building, structure, or use which is permitted in the particular zoning district. Sheds are subject to the same requirements as detached accessory buildings or structures. B, a vehicle carport is allowed is an allowed motor vehicle parking accessory structure to a main building. C, since a vehicle carport is not an enclosed structure, it cannot be considered an accessory building. Therefore, the main purpose of a vehicle carport is storage of a licensed motor vehicle or recreational vehicle. It may be used on a limited basis for routinely used outdoor items such as bicycles, outdoor grill, lawnmowers, et cetera. All other storage requires the use of an approved accessory building. D, an approved zoning compliance permit is required for all accessory buildings, and in addition, an approved building permit is required for all detached accessory buildings over 200 square feet and all attached accessory buildings. No accessory buildings shall be allowed on any lot which does not contain a main building. F, accessory buildings shall be conventional new build construction or prefabricated. No mobile, tank, junk object, or salvage materials, trailer vehicle, or similar items shall be utilized as an accessory building or storage structure. G, temporary approval for a variance to Section 3.14D due to weather-related emergency may be granted by a vote of two-thirds of the members of the zoning board of appeals, MCL 125.30, 3604, subsection 9 and 10. Zoning Board Appeals is required to conduct an expedited review of any variance request to Section 3.14D. H, accessory buildings may be made of wood, metal, or buildings commercially manufactured of plastic, vinyl, or fabric. I, accessory buildings must be structurally solid. J, accessory buildings must be securely anchored and capable of withstandingly wind loads to avoid being blown from their installed location. K, accessory building workmanship shall be of professional nature and maintained in good appearance and repair. L, within a residential zone district. Point one, no more than two detached accessory buildings shall be permitted on any lot. Point two, the maximum building height of an accessory structure shall be 14 feet. Three, the total square footage of all accessory buildings located on a lot shall not exceed the ground floor area of a principal building located on the same lot. Point four, existing non-conforming accessory structures may be replaced on the existing footprint, provided they are wholly contained within the property and meet required front yard setback and design requirements and do not inhibit emergency access. Point, excuse me, point five, the architectural character of accessory buildings over 200 square feet shall be compatible with and similar to the main building with respect to materials, scale, design, aesthetic quality as determined by the zoning administrator. Excuse me. And attached accessory buildings and structures shall be made structurally part of the main building and shall conform to the district setback requirements of the main building. And detached accessory buildings and structures shall be a minimum of 10 feet from any other building or structure unless properly fire suppressed, and 3 feet from any rear or side property line. Oh, accessory buildings shall be erected, excuse me, shall not be erected in any required front yard or occupy any portion required. Read the belt. Good, Mr. Buffer.
Can I have a take over?
Excuse me.
In any district except that guard houses may be allowed in the required front yard in the industrial district. P, no accessory building shall be used in any part for residential dwelling, boarding, or sleeping purposes. Q, amateur radio communication towers and windmills not exceeding 75 feet in height are allowed as an accessory used to the operator's dwelling or business. Supporting structures shall be designed to collapse upon themselves rather than toppling toward adjacent properties. R, wireless communications antennas may be attached to a local existing telecommunication tower, water tower, or other structure after the issuance of a zoning compliance permit. S, a swimming pool may be allowed on a lot subject to the requirements of the building code and section 3.27.
Five. Don't say that.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Jacob. And I would just like to add one thing based on a question that came up earlier about this. All, all of this ordinance was already in place except for the definition of what can be stored in a carport. The rest of it is not new. The rest of it has been there for a long, long time. So just to clarify that. So we do have a motion on the table made by Larry, seconded by Jacob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
I think Larry always gets the fun ones with her book and a hat.
He does a good job. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Misty, for jumping in there.
Yes, thank you.
Next, we have possible approval of an amendment to our employee participation in political activities policy. This is a policy. It's not part of the charter. It's not an ordinance. We have a book of policies that are guidelines for employees and elected officials. The one addition to what you have is to the employee candidacy. The first two paragraphs were already there. That one line that starts with the word employees is the only suggested addition to that. So for the, again, for the benefit of those people who do not have this in front of them, I'll just read that paragraph. Regarding employee participation in political activities policy, it was adopted January 19, 2017, amended in 2021, and amended again July of 2024, should this pass. Employee candidacy. The city recognizes that its employees have the same fundamental civic responsibilities and privileges as other members of the public. Among these responsibilities and privileges are campaigning for an elective public office or holding an elective or appointed office to the extent that neither activity conflicts with the employees' duties of the city. In connection with campaigning and/or holding public office, an employee may not use city facilities, equipment, or supplies, or use any time during normal work hours for campaigning purposes. So those are existing paragraphs. The addition is this. Employees may not disclose confidential city information to candidates, people who are running for public office. And so that is the one suggested addition to that paragraph. Any discussion on that? None? Okay, looking for a motion then?
I move that we approve the following amendment, the employee's participation in political activities policy. Should I reread?
You probably should.
All right, for completeness here. Employee candidacy. The city recognizes that its employees have the same fundamental civic responsibilities and privileges as other members of the public. Among these responsibilities and privileges are campaigning for an elective, elective public office or holding an elective or appointed office to the extent that neither activity conflicts with the employees' ability, employees' duties of the city. In connection with campaigning or holding public office, an employee may not use city facilities, equipment, or supplies, or use any time during normal work hours for campaigning purposes. Employees may not disclose confidential city information to candidates. Political activities. Employees may not distribute political campaign materials to other employees during work hours or on city property. No employee may collect or solicit funds for political use or solicit for campaign workers on city property. No employee may use the city's communication systems, including email or voicemail, to promote or solicit anyone to vote for any political party or candidate. No employee may give the public the impression through his words or actions that the city is endorsing any political party or any particular candidate for local, state, or national public office. Employees shall not display political literature, posters, or signs, or wear political buttons or clothing endorsing a party or candidate while on city property. Political posters and signs shall not be affixed to any city-owned equipment or vehicles. No political sign or poster shall be placed on city property.
Second. I don't know if it's, not really yet. Second, but they don't, would you have to do it that way? It's not only a, it's a policy.
It is, it was a movement, so I would have to say...
Yeah, because I mean, we're adding something new to it.
Yeah, and that's why, just we didn't think of that when we read it three years ago.
So we have a motion from Jacob, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. And the next item, number five. Kyle wasn't able to be here tonight because of a school-related post-track season event in Stockbridge. I don't know exactly what it is. But as you all know, he assists with coaching the track team, so he is in Stockbridge. But he did provide you all with the quote. We did talk about this when he was here at one point and asked him to get this. So feel free to take a few minutes to look this over for the new 2025 Ford Police Interceptor Utility, all-wheel drive in dark blue.
I think he's got this, oh, we got a grant to cover it. He's got it in the budget. I don't know if he got a grant, like pay us back or something, if I remember correctly.
There's...
I'm sorry, mistake.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
It's okay. I'm going to save it if I figured it.
The delivery date approximately 90 to 120 days, more or less, probably more, but...
I move that we approve the purchase of the 2025 police Ford Police Interceptor Utility vehicle from Long Haven Ford of Owasso, in the amount not to exceed $48,841. We're authorized, authorized Chief of Police Kyle Box to sign the necessary documents for the purchase. Second.
We have a motion from Chad, seconded by Chad. I'm sorry, motion by Bob, seconded by Chad. I was thinking about singing. And it just threw me all off. But it's signed, motion from Bob, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you.
How did we get that grant for it?
How do we?
Yeah, how did we?
We had, we have to apply for it, I mean, we apply for it every time we need a vehicle.
Yeah.
And I don't know, honestly, who goes through.
This would be USDA?
USDA is what I was thinking was last time, yeah. And then, a very good lead-in to something I wanted to discuss, so thank you very much. Last meeting, I did mention that I thought it might be a good idea for us to talk about creating a grants committee. And so I'd like to discuss that some more. It's, there are so many grants available, but if we don't have someone looking for them, searching for them, we don't even know they're out there. And now that we're a little more qualified for a grant, now that our master plan is almost approved, and with the $200,000 that's going to go toward our tornado cleanup and rebuilding of the DPW buildings, that money that we've been trying to squirrel away for that stuff may be available for matching funds, because almost all grants have matching funds of some kind, 50/50, 60/40, 80/20, whatever it happens to be. So I think we're in a better position now than we were before to get some grants, but we can't get them if we don't apply for them, we can't apply for them if we don't know they're out there. But honestly, I don't have time to look for them all the time. I just don't. So if we had a committee, we could share that responsibility. I do know that the department heads, Kyle with the police car and Kevin with DPW, they get ticklers, if you will, through their email saying that grant money's available for this type of thing. So they would, you know, get that, and if it then comes to a grant committee to say, yeah, we should apply for that, whom we would bring it to council for that, you know, there needs to be a process built in, but I just, I think we're missing out on some stuff that we might be able to get. But then again, if you guys don't have time either.
I'm saying grant writing takes a long time.
Well, no, you wouldn't write the grant.
Well, I mean, even looking for them, because like you said, there, there's so many out there.
Yeah.
And it's like, where do you start looking at that?
Lion Bear is a grant writing company who is associated with the SEDP in Owasso. And we did an intake interview with them a couple of years ago, and they said, you people aren't in a position to write a grant for anything. You don't have money, you don't have a master plan, you don't, you know? But we did a new intake eval with them now that we have those things in place, and they said, yeah, you're, you're looking good, and we'd be happy to help you, but we, if you hired us, yes, we would search for grants. And we did hire a grant writer four years ago, three years ago, who did some searching, but he ran into the same thing that Lion Bear told us. We just weren't ready. We just weren't in a position. So we canceled our contract with him, although he did help us with a cops grant, he helped us with another grant. But I just don't know, I don't know how to get the city in a better position to get grant money. Any ideas, any thoughts?
As I say, I think that probably a mini committee would be a good idea to start brainstorming some of, some ideas, and possibly, you know, James Hisaw, who's the gentleman's name that we got, there may be somebody else out there that we could, you know, look at potentially contracting with, that would help with that part of the, the activity.
And we could contract with Lion Bear. I mean, the stuff that they're doing for us right now, they're not charging us for because we are a high enough investor in the SEDP, but if we want them to look for grants on a regular basis, we'd have to contract with them, just like we would with anybody.
What I think a committee might be able to do, at least, you know, frame what are the things that are of highest priority to the city that we ought to be looking for grants.
Yes.
Right now, DPW's got their ideas, you know, police department's got their ideas, Parks Group has got their ideas, planning commission's got their, everybody's, everybody's got thoughts, we can't go after all of them, so across-disciplined half a dozen people might be able to reach a consensus. Here are the top four things that we'd like to go get some grant money, money for, and then contract to say, in the next 90 days, can you come back? I just picked a number out of the air. The next, excellent time, what are the grant opportunities that are out there and what's involved in matching and things for those four priorities?
Define their, define our needs and wants.
Yeah.
We want all this, but we, we really need this, so.
Exactly, and try to, as a city, decide what are the, I pick four, doesn't need to be that, but it can't be a super-long laundry list right now, but what are the highest leverage items?
To be quite honest, I mean, some of the ones that are not $100,000 products, they're really pretty minimal to put in. It's more like, I think Megan shared one with you and I, it was like a $500 beautification grant in Chivas, it was some foundation in Chivas County. I think having, like, the kind of, I mean, I'm in sales for a living, it's like, you gotta put your feelers out there, you gotta be constantly on the outward, right? So I think even considering, there's a couple of community members that came to different events that had previous experience, you know? Some of our committees are open to public or not necessarily council members, you know, city staff, et cetera, but maybe even including some of the public business, you know, to get different areas in too, for some of the smaller ones, I guess is what my point was on that, like beautification or, you know, downtown business, things like that. So I think we are all in two or three things already, so getting other people involved might be beneficial.
Well, my thought would be to have the department heads from DPW, the police department from Parks Committee, and then perhaps a council member that has time. I would be willing to sit on that committee and then see who from the public would be interested by maybe having those people have a, have a public meeting inviting interested people to attend to see who would want to participate. Or, I mean, we got a lot of ideas from residents when the master plan was put together, a lot of ideas. But, and, and again, last night, somebody asked Megan, why don't we have a splash pad? She said, because we don't have $200,000 to start doing that. It's, I mean, you know, it's just something we'd really like, but we don't have the money for it, but. And, and I don't think most of us recognize, realize how much things like that cost. And when they told me that it would be $200,000 just for the engineering to put a sidewalk down Bath Road, I was blown away, just for the engineering. So anyway, it's expensive out there in the world. But is there anybody, anybody on council who would have time to at least sit in a, probably an evening meeting with the public to see if there are people, residents, who would like to participate in that? You can think about it. Think about it, let me know.
If it does open up to the public, I think post-council after November, I might be interested in something like that.
Okay.
So you can keep me on the waiting list if you will.
Jacob, after December.
Because I'd still like to continue with Parks and, and that sounds like something I would do.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, well, that's the end of that. Any other business that should come before council at this time? Is there anybody?
I'd like to put something on, for either, we can talk about it right now or put it on the next agenda, it's, it's kind of minor. Over at the public parking lot behind the fire station, library, and greenhouse, there's only one handicap spot.
Yeah.
And it's, the sign is like 10 feet high.
Yeah.
I'd like to see if we can pull one for the library, like where the old fire chief vehicle is, I can get the, we'll get them to move that one.
I talked with Trent about this, and he said, I absolutely would not recommend that you put a handicap parking space there.
Okay.
If we need to back an emergency vehicle up to there and somebody's car's in there.
It's in the way.
It's a problem.
Okay, that's fine, that's valid, but what, because I looked up ADA, and it says, it doesn't have to be, there's no maximum or minimum spa, or distance.
Distance.
But if it crosses a road or an alleyway or something, it's a crosswalk. So we should paint a crosswalk there. And I think it's kind of awkward where it's at, that's my opinion, so.
And it's, where it is is, it was probably, well, I don't know why, it is there. I don't know if it's been there when, way back when TDS was actually using the building.
Oh, maybe.
But, but I don't know, I don't know when it went there.
I thought the telephone pole was there, it's easy to put the sign, it's a handicap parking.
I, I did talk to Kevin about this because, because we did get communication from your wife asking about that, and we, I talked to Kevin about moving that handicap spot and Trent, and that's when Trent said, yeah, so they're not, don't put it right up.
I didn't have a conversation with that.
Now I'll interfere with two takers when we pull up, because the fuel station's on the back of the station.
Okay.
Okay, that, that's fine, you know, it's a good conversation, why do I break it up? But at least let's be compliant with the ADA if we can, and put a.
Put a crosswalk.
Paint a crossmark across.
Can I interrupt, and I just ran up. Anyway, I talked to them about moving that.
Maybe move a handicap sign, normally people can see it.
He mentioned if we were gonna do something like a new handicap spot, that we really should do a redo of that parking lot, you know, resurface the lot, paint new lines, it's, you know, really, so then that became an issue because that's.
Oh, that's, yeah, that would, the engineering for the sidewalk was 200 grand. Parking lot would be more than that.
I just, I wanted to say something when you get a moment, we're gonna talk about that, I just. Um, I think it was last, was it last Thursday, Dennis, that there was like an open mic?
Yeah.
That was really cool, I could hear it in my ear.
Oh, really?
I could hear people singing, I actually had a guest over there like, what is that? And then I didn't know what it was, but my daughter's like, no, you know, Dennis is having an open mic down there, people are singing and doing karaoke down at the pavilion, and I thought that was really cool that you did that.
Do another one Thursday.
Are you?
Yeah.
I probably won't karaoke, but.
You can come, lesson. Come, lesson.
Where's that at?
By the basketball court.
Yeah. It's a building in the school area, yeah. It was just nice sitting in my yard hearing people singing.
Thank you.
Maybe Kyle will sing.
Yeah, he says, and here you go. Anybody else have business that needs to come before council? Any other public? Did you have anything else you wanted to share?
Not more.
Okay, thank you. And agenda items for our next meeting, does anybody have any of those?
We have a, we brought in previously the RV storage, and went back to ordinance committee with some modifications, surely guess those now would work through with the city attorney, and hopefully we'll be able to get that one on the agenda next time.
Okay, that sounds like we've come to an end of our business for the night, so 8:02, and this meeting's adjourned. Thank you all for being here.